At Council Bluffs Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluffs Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Bluffs Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Okay. It's seven o'clock. Please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order, show that all council members are in attendance. Tonight we have seven public hearings and one resolution. I'm sorry, we have six, but we have a motion for the approval of the agenda and tape recording of this proceeding being incorporated into the official minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-18 authorizing the vacation and disposal of the east-west alley abutting lots 11 through 16 and the west 19 feet of lots 10 and 17, block 37, Central subdivision. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
If you wish to speak to the council in regards to this matter, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your special time here tonight as we have a special meeting. My name's David Fier. I'm a landscape architect with Olson Associates in Omaha, soon to be Council Bluffs. And I'm here representing Raising Canes on behalf of their request to have this alley vacation and final plat approval. At this time, I would open up for any questions you might have regarding these two matters.
Any questions for Mr. Fier?
Just to pass along that I had an opportunity to speak with some of the homeowners along there that were impacted by this and got some nice compliments for how they were treated and the neighbors around them, that they were kept informed as to what was going on. And there are some happy campers, if you will, as a result of this. And I just wanted to express my kudos for the clients here and for the way that they treated the residents there and the homeowners. And it was nicely done and a good model for how to move development forward. So my compliments.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-19 granting final plat approval for a one-lot commercial subdivision to be known as Central Subdivision Replat 1. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to address the council in regards to this matter? Please give your name and address for the record.
David Fier with Olson Associates. I'm not going to see anymore.
But if you have questions, he's here and available. Think we're good?
We're good.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Has there thought about perhaps waiving third?
I'm fine with that.
These are resolutions. Forgive me. A resolution. Sorry. Never mind.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-35 approving the right-of-way authorization in connection with the Ninth and Tenth Street Bridges over Indian Creek fiscal year 15-19. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone? Excuse me. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Would like to just make a comment here and a kudo to Mr. Cox in Public Works. He's the city engineer. And I contacted him when I read in the staff package that these easements would require the permanent removal of garages belonging to homeowners on the affected properties. So I contacted him and asked them what provisions would be made for the homeowners with regard to those garages. Would they be liable for demolition costs and would they be compensated for the loss of value to their property? And the answer to that is that they were being taken care of and that they were being kept informed as to the process. So I thank him for making sure that that's done, and I will vote in favor.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance to rezone property generally located between South 30th and 34th Street, between First and Second Avenues as follows. Ordinances, I'm sorry, ordinance 6270, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.070 by rezoning lots 4 through 6, block 6, Ferry Edition, lots 1 through 6, block 7, in the north half of the vacated alley and west half of the vacated South 33rd Street, abutting Bryant and Clark's subdivision. Lots 1 through 8, block 9, in the north half of the vacated alley, abutting the south half of the vacated alley, abutting lots 11, 13, 14, and 15 Bryant and Clark's subdivision. And lots 1 through 6, block 10, in the vacated alley in the west half vacated South 30th Street, abutting Bryant and Clark's subdivision from I-1 Light Industrial District to R-3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District as defined in chapter 15.10. Ordinance 6271 amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.070 by rezoning lots 1 through 3, block 6 Ferry Edition, lots 7 through 12, block 7 in the south half vacated alley, abutting Bryant's and Clark's subdivision. Lots 9 through 16, block 8 Bryant and Clark's subdivision from C-2 Commercial District to R-3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District as defined in chapter 15.10. And finally, ordinance 6272 amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.070 by rezoning lots 7 and 8, block 2, and lots 1 through 8, block 3, in vacated South 30th Street, abutting Bryant and Clark's subdivision from I-1 Light Industrial to C-2 Commercial District as defined in chapter 15.15. Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to address the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve 8E, 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Would there be an interest in waiving third on that?
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. And then Dick or Marcy, Nate had made a reference to waiving third on the prior one. Did we do that?
Yeah. We had not. Was it an accident? We didn't.
Well, wasn't there one though of the public hearings that...
I think it was a resolution.
Oh, that's right.
And I thought it was an ordinance. Sorry.
No, I just wanted to make sure that when we did this one, I remembered that you referenced another one. Okay, this is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance 6267, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.070 by rezoning the property located at 2410 North Broadway, legally described as a tract of land located in lots 2 and 3 of Auditor subdivision located in the south half of the northwest quarter of section 19 Township 75 North, range 43, west of the 5th Principal Meridian, from R-1 Single Family Residential District to R-3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District, and amend a planned residential overlay as defined in chapters 15.20 and 15.28. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter?
Yes.
Could you give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name's Bill Weddaking. I live in Des Moines, Iowa. I'm an architect for the owner, and I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
We had a good summary on this so far.
Well, actually, I did. If I may ask it, it relates more to the upcoming resolution, but there were two comments from the surrounding neighborhood, and they're quite favorable towards your project. The two questions were, one more to you would be, the neighborhood, as you might be aware, was largely responsible for helping to restore the green belt along that street, about 2.8 miles, I think. And they were wondering as part of that if you might consider putting a few more trees. There are a good number in your plan overlay, but perhaps a few more along the North Broadway side of the property. They ask you to consider that.
We will consider that. I'll give that to the owner and talk with him about it.
Thank you. And the only other one, it's perhaps more of a question for my colleagues. The only other comment I received was, in the unlikely and unfortunate event that this project weren't to occur, is there any thought to having this rezoning revert back to its current designation in that very unlikely event? Was the only other comment I received.
I guess that would depend on the real estate interests on the owners. I mean, if they intended future development at some point, that might become problematic. But I can certainly see the homeowners interested in that. And if there's no intent to develop the property and possibly resell it, then that would be entirely appropriate.
That's their concern, as I understand it.
And not that it's your issue, but at the last council meeting, we had a North Broadway resident, and that bridge that goes to the Lutheran Church and to some housing units is a privately owned bridge that is in desperate need of repair. And he asked if there was a possibility that some way they could connect from Sylvan, is that the right street?
Yes.
Through your property. And I don't, we'll look into that to see if there's a possibility of dealing with you on that, but...
The owner is aware of that. I know that has been brought up, so I don't know where that stands with their conversations.
Perfect. But that won't inhibit your...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Any? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there discussion?
Nate, on the reversion back?
Yeah.
I have in the past been, I feel like that, you know, if we vote to say that an R-3 zoning is appropriate, and this is just for me, I always look, is the site appropriate for that type of development? Not this particular development, but that type of development? And so probably would not be in favor to a reversion on it, only because I tend to think zoning runs with the land, not who the developer is or what the development is. It either is or isn't a good location for R-3, so...
Would the overlay address any of those concerns? If this particular project, again, in the unfortunate and likely event it weren't to occur, would it require a new overlay?
It would require, when you have the planned residential overlay, bring it before the city council to approve the plan, right?
Yeah. Under 7A, you're going to be approving a plan, and unless that's the plan that goes forward, they will have to come back to this council.
I think then that would probably address the neighborhood's concern about having a check, if you will, in the process where they could be consulted or come before the council at some future date if that were necessary. And going that route would alleviate your concern, which I think is a good one, about how if it's a good use, it's a good use with the land, not who may currently have it. So maybe that's the best way to proceed. I think maybe their concern is addressed.
And I like the overlays because I think it really does allow us to make sure that it fits into the neighborhood and isn't something that wasn't intended.
Sure, that's the concern, is a very dense multi-family.
I think it is. And so it sounds like it'll be addressed, so that'll be, okay. I'm agreeable to that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. This is time and place for ordinance 6268, which amends the zoning map as adopted...
I'm sorry, you were too quick. I don't even want to motion to waive the third on that one.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I was trying to do it.
You're exactly right.
I do motion to waive the third.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to waive the third? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Sorry, Matt.
You're fine. This is the time and place, no, this is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance 6268, which amends the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.070 by rezoning property legally described as being the south 908.96 feet of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section 18-74-43 lying east of the lateral 5 except city, from A-2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District to I-2 General Industrial District as defined in chapter 15.21. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Jim, do you, can you give us your name and address for the record, whoever?
Jim Kaiser, 23118 McPherson, Council Bluffs. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for the special meeting tonight, the extra effort that's being made, and also for the input that's been given us with regards to the design and layout of this project. And I see that you have received a copy of those maps to show how we've taken into account your suggestion to limit the rezoning to just a portion of this site. We believe that this is an opportunity to more permanently solve a problem, you know, with the crushing needs of Council Bluffs in an area that can be controlled and with a company that has a great track record, taking into account the environmental concerns and the other issues that would normally crop up with this type of use. The construction and relocation of the business to this location would be a really positive growth in that particular area and allow them to be able to continue to expand their business, which is what their ultimate goal is, is to be able to provide more and better service for Council Bluffs and the surrounding community. But we would also like to open up to any questions that you might have that we need to address that may have come up that we can take care of at this time.
Any questions for the property owner?
I don't really have any. I think if I understood it right, the drive back to the portion that would be rezoned for the actual rock crushing activity would be a paved drive, so we don't have to worry about trucks kicking up dust and things like that.
Correct.
So that would have been my only other concern. I think it's good.
Okay. I think it's been well planned, so congratulations.
I would just like to point out in speaking with Chris that a good portion of their business is not in Council Bluffs, and they're making the effort to stay in Council Bluffs. And this rezoning, to keep them in Council Bluffs and rezoning just a portion of that property to make everybody happy, the city and the property owner, I think it's a good thing.
Looks like it'll give you all a good opportunity to expand operations, and with all the concrete work and construction going on, that's a very welcome addition because we need all the capacity in that regard we can get. So glad to be able to work together.
You bet. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, do we take our concrete out of the city currently?
I honestly don't have an answer for you.
I believe we do.
To my knowledge, it's currently going to Omaha.
So this would be an opportunity for us to bring our, to keep that over here in Council Bluffs as well.
All right. Any, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to rezone, and see, I'm not sure if the legal description that was provided in the written ordinance was for the original parcel or this new seven-acre parcel, so...
Why don't we just refer to it as the seven-acre...
The northeast, yeah. The northeast seven acres of this parcel be rezoned to I-2 from A-2.
And the rest of the property be rezoned to I-1?
And the rest of the property be rezoned to I-1.
And that would be subject to a survey being provided and a parcel split being approved?
Correct.
That fits your understanding as well? Very good.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And finally, we have a resolution, which is 16-27, which was postponed from February 8, 2016 to apply a planned residential overlay and adopt the associated development plan for Bethany Lutheran Home located at 2410 North Broadway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Anyone wishing to address the council? Yeah, please go to the podium and give your name and address for the record.
Carla McGinnis, 1312 Avenue B.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Okay. I have brought the information I told Mr. Watson about. I also brought a list of some petitions that we have signed. We're still working on them.
Okay. You want to turn those in tonight and...
Yeah, these that I have so far, but we're still working on that. There's a few other things that I've been thinking about that I would like you guys to consider as far as the snakes go. The economy factor that they will bring into the town, if you will allow these, and the job factor. The stores like PetSmart, Petco, The Bird Cage, they will bring jobs into this town because they will have to bring people in to handle them. They will bring money into the town, the sale of these animals, okay? It's a no-win situation. There are so many people, I'm not going to be able to get all the signatures that I would like because there's so many people who are scared to sign because they're afraid that they will get their name out there and they'll get tagged like I did. Does that make sense?
No. In all honesty...
There's snake owners who does not want their names out there.
Yeah. Council Menringenberg suggested that you get some signatures on a petition which would demonstrate that the citizens of Council Bluffs support an ordinance that would allow pythons in the city. And so if you come and say, "Well, I can't get signatures because there's a whole bunch of other people violating the current law," to me, that probably doesn't bode well for...
Well, no, I have gotten those. What I'm saying is there's a lot of people that won't come forward because, you know, they're scared, you know? They don't want to be looked at in a bad way, and I understand that.
Yeah. No, if they're violating the law, I understand that too. I just think that you need to get...
I'm doing everything I can to do it legally, is what I'm trying to get this done right.
Yep.
So I have these, and we're still working on that.
Yeah, we'll take those if you want.
I'm doing everything that I possibly can.
Put them on file, and then if you get more Monday...
I'll bring them in every time I come in. I will bring stacks and stacks every time I come in.
Well, the key's probably, because then you put the onus on us to keep your records for you. I would suggest if your intent is to continue getting petitions, that you hold on to them and then submit them all at once rather than...
I would like to give these...
Sure.
What I did was, the petition that I did online, I went through and I marked off everyone from Council Bluffs who signed.
Okay.
Out of all the signatures that I have, I marked out everyone from Council Bluffs, and I highlighted that so that you can see how many did sign from here.
All right. Perfect.
So I did do that, and here are these.
All right. Thanks so much.
And you do have your own copy?
I do. I do, yes. I make sure I keep everything.
All right.
And this is what I offered for Nate Watson from the DOJ on the ESAs.
All right. Thank you so much.
Have you guys had a chance to think over this at all?
I did do some research, but I'm not a voter, so...
Okay. I did look into it, and a colleague of mine had researched this for another matter, and we couldn't find where snakes had specifically been a required animal. It's certainly been a support animal in certain areas, but we couldn't find any court cases or statutes that required a local government to allow them. And like I say, though, there, you know, it's, I don't know every law there is for sure. If I'm missing one, I'm very, very glad to take a look at it. But I looked, and my colleague had done it for another purpose, a very extensive search about a year ago, and I was able to read his research, and he couldn't find them.
I don't think there's any law that specifically requires any specific animal.
Yeah. That's what I was finding.
I mean, no animal specifically required.
Yeah.
But there's an open door for any animal that can be a comfort to be allowed as an ESA.
I think it has to be an animal that's legal, so...
I mean, that's what's in that paperwork that I gave them right there.
That's for housing. That's for housing. So, you know, I did read through what you gave us, and that applied to people who rent homes. So I can't tell you you can't have a dog if your doctor has said you can have, you know, that you need this dog. But what you sent did not indicate that a city has to change their ordinances, because if that were the case, then if somebody, I mean, I'm not trying to be flippant, but if that's what the law intended, then I could have a tiger if my doctor said my tiger, you know? They don't require us to change our law to accommodate an animal that's not legal. And I would tell you that the US government is still working on banning all pythons from coming into the United States. They've backed off, and they've restricted it to certain varieties right now, but they've discussed that if they're not indigenous to the country, of not allowing them in. So I don't believe that what you sent indicates that we have to change the law to accommodate the snake. I think that it needs to be for different reasons, you know? I don't believe that we're...
I'm just asking, I mean, I'm not asking for any special permission, and I'm not asking for this to be done for medical reasons. I'm just showing you the research that I have. I'm just asking for, you know, you guys to be reasonable and fair. I mean, I've had these guys for five years, and there's other people who love their animals. You know, this is to me, along the same guidelines of telling someone they can't have their cat or their dog because they're the wrong color. You know, how do you tell someone that you can't love a certain animal? You know, my snakes are no more dangerous than a cat. Less so, actually. My snakes have never been aggressive.
Part of it is the location of animals. For example, in my family, a lot of people really like horses, and a lot of my family are farmers and have ground where they're able to have them. I, in my postage stamp size yard, I can't legally have a horse. And that's a choice I made living where I do. And... I made, living where I do, and we have to look to the benefit of, it's intention, it's a tough issue, because we want people to be able to do what they want in their lives. At the same time, when we're in an urban environment, we have to look to the rights of the people who are 15, 20 feet away from you next door, and so sometimes you can't have, there are choices, and then there are consequences to the choices, too.
I understand that, but if I'm having my snakes inside my house, and they're not coming out, and they're not affecting the community, how is that a problem?
Well, to use my example, it'd be just like if I put a fence up in my, and I genuinely very small yard, if I kept the horse in, it wouldn't be affecting anyone else.
That could affect someone else.
Arguably, well, it could, and if it got out, which would be a similar example, I suppose, but well, horses do get out, I assure you, but.
I have to agree with you on that, okay.
And snakes will get out.
Yes, they do.
And so, it just comes down to what's the fit there, and as much as sometimes I would like to have a horse, I'd have to choose, I can't have both. And in my case, I'd prefer to live in my little yard in town and not have the horse, and so it's one or the other, and it's that way with a lot of animals, like even with cats or dogs, you can't have as many as you want, we have laws against that, and it does bother some folks, but we have to worry about the good of everybody and how it interacts with everyone, and there's, it's where you draw the line, and on this one, I'm just not comfortable, as I've been really straight with you about it, I'm not comfortable moving the line.
I just ask that you.
But I totally respect your view that you disagree with me on that, I know.
I do, and I just ask that you consider that you don't completely close me off.
And then, can I make a comment to save you a lot of? If you give this council a petition that just has typewritten names like this, it doesn't.
Right, that's what I was saying, I was printed out from the petition I did online, and I just marked through the names that were from Council Bluffs.
But I could take a list and type names in there, and so.
I understand what you're saying.
You need to do this what you did on this one, and get signatures.
Right, and I'm going to continue to do so.
Perfect.
Yes, just, I just ask that you do not completely close me off.
We never will, that's the great thing about the Democratic Republic we've got going here, it's, you have the absolute right to come to us with whatever you believe, and you quite clearly, genuinely, honestly believe this, and so you should keep doing what you believe, I'm very proud of you for doing that, so, but I share in the mayor's, the most persuasive type are the ones where people handwrite, especially in this day and age where some people even consider that old fashioned, maybe, I guess that makes me old fashioned, but I think that carries a lot more weight.
I agree.
I agree with the mayor, and I think most people would.
I agree.
If you can get a lot of people that show it's the will of the people to change it, well, that's generally how our system works.
That will be on Thursday, when it's nice.
All right.
Beating the streets, I promise that.
Well, good luck to you then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the council?
Mr. Mayor, before I forget, at what time you think appropriate, I would like to move to waive third consideration on ordinance 3G, and I just wasn't thinking at the time that that's the only ordinance we didn't waive third on, and that's with regard to the rock crushing, and I.
All right, let's.
We do need to do that.
Come on up, and we'll do that real quick. Nate would like to make a motion to waive third consideration on 3G, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Dick, since we amended that slightly, is that an issue?
The hearing was on rezoning the entire parcel to I2, so by going with less, no, it's appropriate to go ahead and waive third.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that, okay.
That's a good point.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and we have soccer.
Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Jordan Kermode, and.
I am Darian White.
Jordan, can you give us your address for the record?
Yes, 3020 Avenue H, Council Bluffs.
Darian, can you do the same?
1323 14th Ave, Council Bluffs.
Thanks. We are here in order to approach the council in regards to, I believe we actually missed, it was the blocks 32nd to 34th and between Broadway and 2nd Avenue, and we would like to, we're formulating a proposal right now in order for a state-of-the-art indoor soccer training facility with two fields, that would also have adjacent indoor running track, discovery rooms for kids, community engagement center, and possible outreach with other programs within the city, and this is first of its kind, doesn't compare to La Vista, Pavilion Project, or anything downtown Omaha, it's the first of its kind within a 500 mile radius. And if you recall, the Halloween Havoc statistics, we're brought in over a million dollars in revenue in a single weekend, based upon our calculations with our tournaments, we're both coaches and community activists, we can, per field, you can generate up to $4 million per year, and seeking on the number of players within the metro area of 30,000 players, we're actually in need of 15 full-size fields in order to outfit all of the players within the area, and that's from 3 to 53 years old, and so we'd like to make that initial approach and discuss the zoning for that as well, because I believe that you guys initially decided on that a few minutes ago, so.
So, it's on one of these that we already decided on, is where you were going to put the location?
Yes, ma'am, the, between 32nd and 34th.
Oh, yeah.
The first and, between first and 2nd Ave, that land where the old bungee silos, but also the city-owned land that's to the west of Arby's, right over there, and we have multiple designs in multiple places, but that would be our prime district, since the west end is in vital need of having something to really spark, as we're both west end boys, and we've both traveled the world and worked with programs all over the place, and realized that something that we can really gather the community around is this sort of thing, and we have spoken with investors and fundraisers, we also have sent out a survey to various people across the city, and there's a lot of uproar for it, there's a lot of asking for it, and we would like your blessing in order to continue with this process.
You know, there's a lot of possibility, and I'm a very big fan of the new urbanism, which is predominantly what that area's been rezoned as, it's for a lot of, like, row houses and a lot of bringing people back to the urban core of a city, so, very, very popular among millennials, and even many retiring baby boomers, but certainly millennials. There is still a lot of possibility in that area, apart from that, that area is awfully close to where it's planned to potentially have areas not only for vehicular traffic, but even more importantly, for the future, pedestrian plus also dedicated space for bicycles, people actually, not so much necessarily just playing at the end of their drive, but people actually using it as a main means of transportation, and again, another very important goal, particularly of millennials, and part of the future of the community, and so this particular area really ties a lot into that. But saying that, there's a lot of area around it, and I agree with you, there needs to be more space, particularly, by the way, towards the east side of our town, where we actually have, it's a lot less, I used to think we didn't have, we had far more green space on the east, but we truly don't, for kids to play, and as we're now requiring the sidewalks to be put back in everywhere, on every street, as they get redone and as things get built, really, I think this is a fantastic idea, that particular area is already starting to move with some of these things, but there's still lots of potential in and around that area, and I strongly encourage you to speak with community development folks and with us and the mayor about what we might be able to do to utilize your talent and clear passion for this, particularly my bias, my favorite sport, but it's a good sport and a popular one, and I think, I really look forward to discussion.
Yes, sir, appreciate it, Mr. Watson.
Thank you.
We have, we've surveyed about a dozen different lands within the city area, all city-owned properties.
Yeah.
We have actually seven different mockups for seven different business models, from a four-field NCAA certified program that would bring in colleges from across the United States, to home field for my players over at the Liverpool Football Club I used to work with in England, to each individual field for training, to having tournaments, because I mean, we lose, with soccer is a year-round sport, where it's summers, tournaments, camps, clinics, reformation of the teams, and you run nine months from August to May, which is the actual season, while we lose out on November through March, which then cuts back for a lot of our kids, we lose out in the summer because we have one month too hot, where I had to cancel multiple camps last summer because it got too hot, then we lose out on rain games during the spring, or we get frost games randomly in the fall, so I mean, we're really missing out on half of the potential, and, but of the programs, of the 27 programs within the metro area, the three that have their own facilities in order to do that are producing Olympic and professional athletes by just providing somewhere for them to kick around, and this is going to extend to more than just kicking a ball around, this is going to be, I look at soccer as the simplest way to share with another person, and with influx of all the refugees that are going to be coming in, that's the only language we're going to have in order to communicate with them, so this is going to tie into multiple aspects in order to everyone in together, I mean, over 5% of the world's population participate in this at any given time, imagine the possibilities that we can have from this, and speaking of, it's called Project Infinum, a place of infinite opportunity, so, we're running it all on a nonprofit basis.
Having attended a few FCK Kaiser slaughtering games myself, sounds like a good time.
I was out there, I coached RAF Lakenheath High School girls' team while I was stationed in England, and went to K-Town, Heidelberg, and Wiesbotten, and Ramstein, Ramstein's amazing, that base is huge.
Yeah, it is.
Jordan, as, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say this, I mean, I like your guys' passion for it, I think this is exciting, I think there is for sure a need, I mean, I've heard from several people when we were talking about Fieldhouse USA, what about indoor soccer, so, there's for sure a need, I think really it would be great if you did, I don't know if you've spoken with our community development yet, but that would be a good starting point to really have them help you with the sites and with what would be a good fit, I think I'd recommend that to you.
I actually spoke with Brenda over there today, and based upon the 28th to 29th Street proposal, I'm using that as a template, and we're using that as a template in order to create this process, and, but yeah, we've spoken with all the clubs in the metro area, actually, Council Bluffs now the largest, the single largest soccer club in the state of Iowa, now with over 2,500 players with the combination of the two clubs, and then we have 30,000 players around here, and we've talked with at least a head or executive of every single one of them, and we have most of them on board, I mean, there's, including Creighton and UNO and Iowa Western, and I mean, the community is really wrapping their heart around this in order to build this for us all, so.
I was going to tell you, as a retired soccer mom, I really appreciate it, wintertime, we'd have to drive to office, they've got a fantastic facility, but it's packed, it's confusing, and we lost a lot of good time during the winter months, that the kids were not getting the practice that they needed, and they weren't getting to play the games that they played during the summer months, so I know personally the need is there, and I do know that when we, I actually went down to Fieldhouse USA in Texas, and I could see real quick all of the indoor soccer ones that popped up around their facility, because the need there isn't as great as here, they don't have winter like we do, but they still obviously are making a good amount of money and making a lot of parents happy with these indoor sites there, so I really encourage you, you know, to find a place in Council Bluffs, we can do this, and I would be very in support of seeing it happen.
And we're, like I said, we're running it on a nonprofit basis, because we want the whole community in order to have a stake in it, and everybody to have a part in it, whether we go back to the World War II times of getting community bonds in order to get everybody to get in on this, one way or another, we really need to get this happening for everyone, because everybody's going to benefit from it, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, have a good evening.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Anyone from the council? Seeing none, we're adjourned, thank you.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our travel club.
Come see us, bank with us, and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. February 26 through the 28th, there's a million ideas to take home at the 14th Annual Council Bluffs Home and Landscaping Show. The same weekend, elite athletes hit the mat at the 2016 NJCAA National Wrestling Championships. And over at the convention center, March 12th and 13th, the Callahan Craft Fair makes its return. Remember, the MAC offers free parking for all events, tickets, information, and more at midamericacenter.com.